All right, ladies and gentlemen. Town council meeting on Wednesday the 26th of June 2019 at 6.30. Before we kick off, can I just, as I admitted, a big thank you to Sally Ann for Sunday's concert. I've never seen so many people in the park. We've worked out, it must have been just over 800 people there. It really was a big turnout. So she did very well all on her own.
I did offer.
I know, she said she didn't want any help.
At least the special that's noted, thank you.
I know, she had a good one. Moving on then. First item is apologies for absence.
Um, councillor Low, councillor Waltsford, councillor Razzell.
You'll have a further to accept there. Councillor Neil. Any of our councillor Woodley. Did you get who it was?
No, sorry.
Councillor Razzell, councillor Low, councillor Waltsford. So it's been proposed, secondly, I'd say, there are apologies, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. Members are asked to declare, if required, any disloyal duty interest they may have on the agenda, and any other interest they may have with respect to an item on the agenda. Anybody? No? Item three is the minute. Confirm the minutes of the meeting held on Wednesday the 12th of June 2019. Then we've got to look at it on page one.
Can I just, um, I sent a couple of queries after all, see this was printed out. Have those, you were meant to come on the draft, are they meant to come on the copy?
They are meant to come on the copy in here, they've also been meant to come on the website. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for that. I might have missed that one as well. To head up to page two, page three.
The exempt item.
There is a separate, obviously we can't discuss it.
No.
But there is, which the chairman will be, I did make it, I did say in my email. And also there is the, which the chairman has resolved, signing shortly is a separate minute sheet here, for councillors only.
Can I ask, when we have exempt items come to council for minutes, they are sent to us on an email marked exempt. Why, if there are separate minutes, which are exempt minutes, why aren't the councils not also receiving the exempt minutes?
Because it should be in with the email. It was with the draft. No, it's a separate, it's a separate sheet.
Well, we're against that, I mean, yeah.
I've never recall ever having had any exempt minutes.
It's only if, if the, if it's an exempt item and it can then be put in the public domain, it will be added into the first minute. If it cannot be, and it's still confidential, then there's a separate confidential minute sheet which is in for the minute file.
But does that come out to the councils on the email?
Yes, it should be in there on the attachment that you saw.
Do we have it this time?
If not, I mean, if you want to, that can be that separate sheet and we brought back from the next meeting.
Because there was, I think councillor Razzell had a query on that one. And, funnily enough, that was something I considered also a query, but.
We can't discuss it, it's an exempt item. But we can bring that separate paper back, that's absolutely fine. Yeah, that's fine.
So, uh, for present, we have certain minutes, and with that, the other paper will come back. Thank you, councillor Low, if you seconded. Councillor Neil, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you. Item four is chairman and members' reports.
Um, sorry. I went to the, um.
Oh, yes, you went to the meeting, didn't you, for us, yes.
So, and it was very interesting, actually. There were some good presentations and there was a marketplace in the hall as well. I brought back for councillor Ainsley, a company who do websites for town councils, which makes articles that you might like to have a look at if you're looking at some point at our website. I brought back some brochures on a couple of companies who do play equipment, which I brought Sally Ann to have a look at. And I brought that, I don't know who we are insured with as a town council, it's not anything that we've ever.
Did it?
But there was a very good presentation given to the whole of the AGM by whoever they are, BHIB Council's insurance, who are specialist council insurer. I brought the presentation, I brought the brochure, and they do cover things like data insurers. And they have local people. They insure some like 16 local councils, and I thought next time we can, when our contract comes up, this might be something that you might like to have a look at. We might like to have a look at, to see whether that might be suitable. And the looks were very good.
Thanks, councillor, for stepping in at the last in front of the table, we're very, very kind of you. And how did it go, so how did the votes go? Because those resolutions, did they all go?
They all fell. Quite a large number.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Right, item, anybody else?
This is not a report, it's a question, and I think it's very pertinent. We have a major planning decision affecting encomended residents. That, I was just looking at the expiry date, we don't have a meeting scheduled, so, yeah, so are you addressing that?
We are going to have, you talk about the non, I've already instructed the clerk on the day that I went and had the interview with the television, that we will have a special meeting which will be open to the public for them to talk about. Have we had the application yet?
Yeah, it is, it's in.
It might not be in our office.
The consultation expiry is the 9th of July, that's all I'm jumping.
Well, the day I'm sending, we can't talk about.
But it's on our list.
Well, that's the generic, at least, they send out, but I'll check.
Yes, that was my intention, was to have just a special meeting for that, and allow members of the public to come, or suspend standing orders, so that members of the public could talk for as long as they liked, so we get all the views out before we make our decision.
This comes back to what you said about planning applications, that item was with the county council on the 7th of June, and we're now at the 26th of June. So why is it not on a, why has Alison not received, why has the clerk not received it?
We'll find out.
Because it should have been on the meeting.
Yes, yeah, well, we will.
It wasn't until last Wednesday, so the agenda's got on Wednesday, the post is looked at, and whatever plans go on that following meeting, so as of last Wednesday, it hadn't come into our office.
But Jay's took them, we'll make sure.
Why they would be on now?
There's something not right with the planning.
Well, probably not us, it's probably, we're just not getting the information quickly. We'll have a little look at that, correct. Item five, councillors' questions. Item six is declarations by the public. Martin, he's two and a half years.
Just very quickly, I think also for most users, we use the council website, because I had numerous complaints when I was a councillor. It's not that it doesn't work most of the time, it's the way it works. Like, for instance, if you click on an agenda, like tonight, it flicks up on most people's phones or whatever they use, a blank page. And unless you're somebody who thinks there's something wrong, let's scroll and see. You don't see that there's another link to click, click. And I think it needs to be made a little bit simpler. But also, there's an issue with past agendas and minutes, which is impossible to search now, because there was a time when you could, you could basically Google, like, for instance, if you wanted to look up as it's topical, which I'm going to talk about next, the mayor's chain, you could Google mayor's chain, Oakham Town Council, and you would get the document which related to any decision made by this council, but it doesn't happen now. It's just pretty useless, so I'm hoping that you do get it sorted.
Yeah, that's what I was watching the agenda.
And the other thing which I wanted to talk about was the mayor's chain item. Most people know that I'm totally against it, but I also wanted to point out that there are a lot of members of the public who are against it. When I put out my election lead with numerous comments, the biggest response I got back from people, and I still get it now in my place of work, isn't it discussed in the Oakham Town Council spending all that money on a chain? And I think the councils, there are a lot of new members, but the council may have forgotten that when Alfred Durs was mayor, the council agreed to buy more than one chain. The public outcry was significant, but actually the council revoked that decision. Now, you have a six-month rule, so it does surprise me that it's come back tonight, because it was less than six months ago that you made a decision which basically said you were going to go ahead with one of these, but the clerk might like to get some extra quotes, which is not really a very good decision. But what I was hoping, there's enough people here tonight, the fact that it's come back, that you revoked the decision this evening, somebody could do that, you're perfectly within your rights to make a proposal. You know, it's not just me making it up, people have said, you know, and it's awful that you're spending our money on that. And you can look at social media, and it's, yeah, there's a few people who always know, but there are lots and lots of comments on social media about it, that we shouldn't be, as a town, buying it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Look. Thank you for that, Martin. Item seven is the Oakham Town Project Board Penance Report. I think we did talk about this today at the chairman's meeting, and the town council's quite keen to get somebody. Of course, any meeting with the town council.
Are you going to report about it?
No, for the spark meeting. Because, well, no decisions are made, we just chit-chat about things, and they were quite keen, we take this on board. So, anybody want to pick up? I wouldn't nominate anybody. Councillor Woodley.
Yeah, I think we need to understand actually what this is, first of all, in the sense of the context of the board and its work. I've spent a long time with the county council on this issue, working out who's going to be involved. So I just think, if you can indulge me for a minute, I'll tell everybody. I'm not standing, I apologize for not doing so. So, the point of this board, as it's term for the first sort of three months, is actually to establish how the board is going to operate. It's a very procedural-driven thing, it's not focusing on the actual getting the work done. So it's a very organisational structure focus about how many representatives are needed, the areas of development, funding. So the county council has some ideas, it has an idea of how it will deliver up to the date where it hands over to be fully autonomous, as it does say in this letter from September. Now, I personally would have been very interested to stand, but I can't make the first meeting, which means I've ruled myself out. But it does need someone with an organisational structure view, really, rather than necessarily just be overly passionate about getting the job done, because that will start post-September realistically. So I just wanted to share that, so you don't all think it's a, you know, five-year commitment. This first piece is all about actually getting it set up and how you're going to operate. So that might alter who decides to put their name in the hat, unfortunately I can't.
This is the follow-on from the task and finish group, isn't it? So, I mean, I do think we ought to have somebody on it just to get us started, because it is important that we, we don't end up doing the same thing with this as has happened with the failed one-way system. We never had an opinion, we never had any input into it. I think it's important, this is our town, and we need to, if you like, not take the lead, but make sure that we're there helping to steer. Councillor Walters.
Chairman, with your immodest, I prefer the nominated person not to also be a red-trimmed council councillor and not to also be a member of the residents' group. In other words, someone who solely represents Oakham Town Council.
It's not essential, but it's just a feeling I have. Well, yes, very, because at the end of the day, if you're wearing two hats, you are swayed, you're not, which way you're going to go. So. Limit it down. Zoe, do you have time to do it?
I could possibly make time. My worry would be that I don't have much of a history in terms of setting up the governance or something.
Yeah, I think the county council are going to lead that side of it, aren't they? They're trying to facilitate, trying to get all the bodies together, all the organisations together, then to get them sorted, get the groups sorted, and then it will run on its own.
I would be happy to put my name forward as the town council's president.
Paul, Jean? I was just going to say, are you still on the resident script?
I have an excellent, I've got a wedding on that day. So I'm going to be looking something from the resident script likewise to represent a certain sector. But it does need people who can make sure that the organisation that's set up is going to be strong and effective.
So, Paul, if you want to say something.
Yeah, notwithstanding the observations by councillor Walters, I'd like to nominate myself, actually.
I'm going to nominate councillor Neil anyway, so do I have a second of councillor Ainsley? There we go. First of all, do I have a second of councillor Neil, councillor Walters?
I'm still thinking about what's happened this morning.
Do you have a bit more time, or?
I would second, I can second, can't I, if I've been nominated?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would second councillor Ainsley. Oh, it's gone.
So. Well, we can look at it again, anyway, can't we? Yes, it's a flowery.
Now, my understanding is that, I think they've got councillor Sally or something, I'm sure they will put forward some suggestions, and it's a matter of working on those suggestions. You're not expected to walk in blind and create some reference.
And in our terms of reference, our Sally wants already set up, task and finish group, so there is a starting point. So it won't be quite so terrifying.
Councillor would be, yes.
And also, we are on hips, mostly.
So, councillor Neil, nominated and seconded, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you. If you are struggling, then we will look at it again. Because I know we want to make sure that goes right. Item eight is Oakham Town Council's website, councillor Ainsley, you're on this one.
Thank you. Nothing really to add to what's in the report, it's just, I think the website can be confusing to use. I think it does, I mean, it needs some work and some TLC, so I think that's what we're proposing. What I'm looking for is a team or a work group to actually go away and come back, have you done some research, and come back with costs, et cetera, so that's what I'm asking.
Okay, anybody else want to, councillor Woodley?
Yeah, bearing in mind that we had the audit report last month, and we picked up some items that were going to be on the policies and procedures. One of those items will actually be met by addressing the website, which is the model procedures book, and so the model publication scheme. So I think it's a fantastic idea. I don't know how difficult it is, and this is a question for the clerk, how she finds it as a usability perspective, and whether the clerk feels that she has any input, because I'm not sure it's just a council decision. I'm wondering if the clerk has an opinion, if she wants to share or not.
Don't need to put you on the spot, just use it.
The assistant uses it more than I do. The only thing I will say is on the model, we have got the, that we have got a template for that, which I can actually put on tomorrow, the one that's addressed by the author. There's a standard one that we have to use, yeah. So that's on, but as far as the website goes, yeah, I'm still, we need to, where that perhaps needs updating.
Councillor Wood? Oh, you think we do?
I just, it's just a question, really, it's a kind of agreement, we've got to put it forward. But do you know how many hits per day, et cetera, this website gets, and what are people actually looking for or at? Do you have that type of information?
I don't, it's not something, I can find out from the, it's not something we were ever shown on the training.
I just wondered if that, if what people are, you know, from that, you can tell what people are interested in, and whether that could be fed back to ensure that that type of information is always available and kept up to date. Because the other thing from the website, we talk a lot in here about money, budgets, what we're spending, what we're doing for the town. And I wondered, because I found it quite difficult to find an event, whether once a year, we blow our own trumpets and tell people, Oakham, exactly what we've spent the money on, for their benefit, not in a budget form, because some people find that quite difficult to plough through, but just in very layman's terms, this is what we've done, this is what we're achieving, and this is what we're moving forward to do, so that people perhaps get more on board with the fact of what we're doing.
Did we have, point of the question, did we have somebody who set up the website to start it? And do we have somebody who continues to have any input into it outside the council?
The, there's a company that we use, who set it up for us. There was, when it was set up a few years ago, there was a couple of councillors that are no longer on the council, that, and so a paper was brought to council, and then this company set it up. And they maintain, well, we obviously update it, and then we just pay them per year for the use of it, and if we need to ring them on, like a service contract thing.
But when this working party gets going, could we, could you provide a sheet saying, you know, when we did this, how much it cost, what the funds, so we have a, you know, an idea of what we're paying at the moment and what we're getting for it, so when we go to look at what we might do, so we can see how it compares? Would that be feasible?
Yes, next to one.
Yeah, because without the information, you can't, you can't make a decision, can you, that's us. But yeah, we want to make sure we're going to do this, let's make sure we get it right and make a usable tool for members. So councillor Ainsley, are you looking for nominations for a working group? And so how many do you think?
I, I've, the council, I would suggest two, three members on that to start with.
Sorry, can I?
Yes, a question, we voted on a social media press officer last meeting, is that a bit outside that?
Obviously, yeah, councillor Walters' input would be greatly desired. And there is a new section, and I think he may well find that he might find himself useful employer, helping us with the new section.
Was that you asking for the volunteer? Sorry about that. Right, coming to the same, obviously, obviously, a lot of lads have made councillor Ainsley, because it was your project, so that's one. Do I have a second for that, councillor Woodley? Do you have any other, any other positive?
Happy to.
Councillor Walters, I'll nominate councillor Walters. Do I have a second for councillor Glof? Third member? Councillor Lowes? Seconded by councillor Buxton. Did you, any more, were you happy, three, everyone happy?
I think three is a worthwhile number, I think more.
So the three nominations then are.
Councillor Ainsley, councillor Walters.
Councillor Lowes, all those in favour, you share. Cover yourself. That's unanimous, thank you very much. That's, we look forward to seeing what comes back after that.
It'll be about two years, I think.
Item nine is recommendations from the Rutland House Working Group, Appendix D. Councillor Lowes aren't here, so.
It's just an overview.
Just an overview, yes. Jean, did you want to say again on this?
No, um, no, not really. Councillor, myself, Matt, sadly, Joey wasn't able to join us, so we made the decision that it should come back to council, new members on the council, and we felt that we should bring it back, and it's what councillor Walters written, covers it all, isn't it?
So, anyone else want to just note it? Does anybody want to, councillor Clough?
I regret not having been at a meeting, I'm sorry. Had another meeting earlier.
Can't be everywhere, that's the problem.
I didn't quite, I didn't quite understand what was causing the development to stagnate through confusing communications, I have no idea where this has come from. Can you elaborate a bit, just ask them?
As I understand it, as I understand it, there was, and I can only express it that way, there was a letter come from Rutland House Community Trust to council, and it seems that the issue to do with the parking, which we didn't grant, if you remember, we were discussing what they could do for the emergency vehicles. And I think along the lines, I think, and I didn't see the letter, that they feel that just having the spot for an emergency vehicle may be difficult. And I think it just requires more discussion. Now, currently, I represent Oakham Town Council on this Rutland House Community Trust Committee. There has only been one meeting, the next meeting is later in July. And at the meeting that I went to, they were discussing a letter to come to the council. I wasn't part of that discussion, being the council, they wanted to be independent, and I respected that. So I never saw the letter, but my understanding is it's about the pump. And that's, I can't tell you more because I'm not.
As far as I remember, when we had this before, the last time the paper came, and we were looking at the drawing, and they wanted to do away with that additional parking down the grass strip, didn't they? Didn't we agree that they, that what they would do is then we put the tiles in, the grass grows through, so the vehicles could get the access along? So I'm a little surprised that they're saying they only want, they want a space, when we've already said that we're going to have the rubber squares put down, the grass will grow through, so the vehicles, you still get the grass, but the vehicles can then run over it. So I think that's probably something we need to have a look at when that letter comes back. Councillor Woodley.
I read this report, and it's a shame that the author isn't here, because it really confuses me. So I know, I know it's to note, but as far as I'm concerned, there's a proposal almost in here, which is to do nothing, which I'm slightly confused what I'm supposed to be noting, because as far as I'm concerned, this should have just been a working group update. Am I missing something, is my question?
I don't, I don't think there is now a working group, because there was, there was the three of us when we met originally, I don't know if we met once or twice. It, there was discussion about the lease, discussion about what the increase in the rental charges as and when the land is built on. And at that stage, we didn't, we didn't meet again, and we haven't, unless we've arranged a meeting, and this is what was decided, and it was mainly because there were four councillors. I did, in fact, wonder whether I was to even continue on the commissary with Rutland House and Community Trust, because, you know, at that stage, I wasn't quite sure what was going to happen.
I don't, I don't think that was already thirded, no, it was, it was fact, John.
Oh, was it?
Jean, Jean.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you, Council Walters, no, you're, you're it. Council Clough. Back up again a minute.
I seem to remember that the council with the, the, the last meeting, when we discussed the parking, we also discussed the rent.
Right.
And I understood that a letter was sent by the plan to, to say that since they had applied for the planning permission ahead of time, they had affected the value of the land, and the land was revalued, and the increase in rent was set, but we've never had, was that done, and did they accept that, and is that increase in rent now being paid?
That's probably what the letter's about.
I don't think so.
The letter was sent, and it wasn't accepted until it was built.
Sorry, it would, they wouldn't accept it?
It's not supposed to be until, until it was built.
Until they get the project over running.
But that's not what the letter, that's not what the council agreed, should, did the council agree that since they put, since they applied for the planning permission, that the rent would go up, I'm sure that the letter said within twenty, within, you know, twenty-four days of receiving the letter, or something like that, to be able to check that.
As we've got a query on this, shall we note this report, and defer any decisions, and we'll have, we'll get this to come back, so we can just check all the, all the details?
There's a point for, for new councillors, there's a comment in here about, about, you know, for example, rent free or reduce rent least, because it's a charity, and I do think it is a point of information, this land was transferred from being amenity land to being land suitable for building on by the Secretary of State, with the proviso, and I've got it somewhere written down here, that the town council were obliged to ensure it continued to receive a market rental. So, the bottom line is that if we wish to do something for the charity, as a town council, we can make a decision to do something for the charity, but we cannot legally simply reduce the rent, because by doing that, we're getting an annual donation in perpetuity, with which, which is not...
Shall, shall, is everybody happy to defer it, Council Woodley?
I would just like it not to be noted, because I think that's incorrect, where it's handled.
Let's defer it and bring it back to some order here, because I think you're correct, because I'm very mindful that as a council, we do require to get good value for money for our great players, and...
We can sort in other ways, but, but not, you know, by doing that, we're giving enough donation, don't we?
So, Council Woodley, are you moving deferment? Is that seconded?
Yes.
Council Ainsley, all those in favour, deferment, actually unanimous, thank you, we'll get that sorted, bring that back.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah, we'll drag, we'll file the minutes and everything, so we've got all the new members, everybody's got all the information, next time, I think, for anything like that, okay. Item ten is request to use cuts close, to consider request and grant commission for fire rescue to use cuts close from Sunday the twenty-third of June, to Sunday the eighteenth of August, nineteen, twenty nineteen.
Did the time happen?
So, I...
Did the time on Sunday?
It was approved, yeah.
No, well, approved, no, so, everyone pick one.
I propose this is a very good, propose this on the message text.
Council Woodley.
My only comment is, have we had any issues raised by our lead of cremations?
No, she's happy with it.
So, I think it's concurrent to no one personally, thank you.
Proposed by Council Clough, seconded by Council Woodley, all those in favour, actually unanimous, I think there's a bonking, the fire rescue and all, services happy, well, not happy, but on board. Right, item F, drains.
Would you like a point of information about the fire rescue?
Yeah, very, 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 very.
I went to the health meeting, the networking meeting, and they spoke at that, and they changed their perspective a little bit, that they are working more on education and hoping to have to go to less fires. They're specifically trying to work in areas which are further astray from getting fire into, so it's, it's offering a service that all the people, for anybody, about how to protect your house against fire, and hope that you don't get one, so I think this, this is part of that process.
Thank you very much for that. Right, then, item eleven is the CCTV survey of Open Community Centre for the Dancie, for the old gym. Do you want to read this one?
No, really, I'll see the, the quote put in front of you, and this is what they recommend.
I think, I think, I think we obviously need to do something, there is, there is a problem with the drain, admittedly, it was blocked by wet wipes, but we don't know who put the wet wipe down there, or when they started, and I think it's probably proven that we do have it lined, anybody want to make a comment? Council Ainsley.
Although, right, I know any signs inside, perhaps it's the same, don't, wet wipes, et cetera.
I believe that the new tenant has done that, yes, and she's also been in touch with, I think it's the eight chasels, for the bins.
Okay. So, I'm going to have a proposal, we go ahead and have it lined, Council Ainsley, first, seconded by Council Buxton, all those in favour, actually unanimous, thank you. Item twelve is the annual goodness stamp, Appendix G, to consider approval, the annual goodness stamp, and section one, the annual return for the year ending March, sorry, thirty-first of March, twenty nineteen. Any comments, anybody? Do I have a proposal we accept? The paper, Council Neil, seconded by Council Denia, anybody want to send before I take a vote? No? All those in favour of acceptance, you sure? Actually unanimous, thank you. Item thirteen is the annual return, paper eight, to consider approval, section two, the annual return, year ending thirty-first of March, twenty nineteen. Anybody want it? Look, Council Woodley.
I was slightly confused, and I'm sure it can be explained to me, the chairman's/mayor's charity account, we, we make payments to and from it, we have signatories on it, but we don't seem to...
We're not discussing that.
It's not, it's not... Well, actually, it is discussable here, because it refers to our financial statement, okay, so we are actually signing our certain amounts of money, including our banks, so that's why it is relevant, thank you. I want to understand, is that included in this amount of money, because it didn't appear to be, based on the accounts somewhere I did.
Sorry, what was your question again?
I don't think, I don't think the mayor's charity fund is actually, is part of the council's, because it's, it's up to the, it's up to the mayor to raise his own money for that charity.
Okay, so how, I, so how did the payments that were made to it then not be reflected on this?
Because we, however, the chairman, basically...
However, the chairman raised the funds that went into the account.
Yes, so, yes.
It has a chairman's allowance contribution of two thousand pounds.
Yeah, that's, that's specific, yeah.
Chairman's, the chairman's allowance is what is agreed in the budget every year, the chairman's charity account is, is money raised by the chairman, or by the mayor, sorry.
So is that a different amount of money?
Well, it depends however that's raised.
Because there was a, there was a statement, when we viewed the financial statement last month, that showed it being transferred into an account, so the chairman's allowance going in.
That, that, yeah, we did deal with that at the finance committee, but I only did a few...
I can explain, can I just explain very quickly?
Yeah, very quickly.
The chairman's allowance, which, which council budget for each year is involved in this, the chairman's charity account is money raised by the, by the mayor, I think I've explained this before, very quickly, that the, there was a thousand pounds raised for, for his chosen charity, and the cheque was presented at civic event, but the signatory was away out of the country, so the, so the money, so the thousand pounds was taken from the current account, but it was immediately transferred back into the, sorry, hang on, so the cheque was taken from the current account, and then the money was taken, then the money was immediately transferred back from the chairman's account, from the charity account, into the current account. I have gone through this with Council Walters.
But other than that, the mayor's charity, I mean, three, sorry, last year, not like I said, the year before, there was zero raised and zero went out, because there were...
It was just unfortunate that this year, that when the cheque was raised, that one of the signatories wasn't here, so the, so, and because of the civic event taking place, to present them this cheque, the cheque was taken out of the current account by two authorised signatories, but it was then immediately paid back, and there's, and there is an order trail on the bank statements. And Council Walters's cheque's...
I can only add that I have seen those transfers on the bank accounts, is it the ideal perfect way of doing things? No. But was it a practical solution to a dilemma? Yes, it was, and no, I wouldn't expect to see it in these accounts, that was my question, thank you.
Any bits? Do I have a proposal to accept the, and you'll return section two? Council Neil, so you have, Council Walters, all those in favour, you sure? Unanimous, thank you very much. Item fourteen, Mayor Shane, to consider report to make decisions out of the...
Close, resolved on thirty January, she used that council green principal to purchase new Shane, but was asked that we had received more quotes, which is what the office has done, so we've received three quotes, but one of the companies that we use, and, well, they've actually just now given us three different designs as well, which, which are received, but we did go off and get three quotes. Now, Fattorini, who've, who've given the three quotes, they actually do all our, these scrolls, that Fattorini deal with all those, so they're quite a big, they're, they're very familiar indeed with, with this kind of stuff. So really, it was, I was asked to come back with three more quotes, which I've done, but in between time, Fattorini have actually given us three new designs, or different designs, should I say, which are, which you have pictures for.
Council Woodley.
I, I personally don't agree with this, but it was a decision that was made by council, so I can't argue about that, but I would like it noted, I don't agree with the expenditure. But one of the quotes that Sarah got from, I can't quite remember, Gladden and Norman Limited, is certainly much more palatable in spending public money on ourselves, as far as I'm concerned, but I didn't know whether actually it was more prudent to consider that, we, we were asking people to quote for a similar design, not necessarily consider, so it basically says as per design supplied to them, so they're quoting to compare against somebody else's design. I'm not sure, because I wasn't at the decision meeting where you asked for further quotes, whether it was specified that actually the design was in question, because you could reduce the amount of expenditure on the public purse quite considerably by changing the design, was, so was that considered, and if not, I'd suggest that would probably be...
The design was already, this has been coming back to council for a number of years, this has been, this is the third or fourth time it's come back, and this was the design that was actually, was actually resolved.
That was the last one, wasn't it?
Yes.
That was that, separate sheet at the back, which I think is with the...
So that was, that was already agreed.
That was the original, it's out of council, it was agreed, so we just wanted more prices than the one we've got.
Council don't have to take the cheapest quote, it says in our financial revelations, however, the Gladden and Norman, I've not ever, I've not, we've not ever, we usually, we've always used Fattorini, it's obviously up to council, but they are well-known company.
Yeah, sure, I'm sure we're all going to get asked questions about this, and I apologise if this is a contentious issue, for, as you say, for about four or five times, so there's obviously quite a deep feeling about this, but I think for the new people on the council, would you possibly explain what is wrong with existing one?
The existing one keeps all in the part, and it's not, it's not the town council's, it's actually the district council's chain.
Right, so what happened to the town council one?
Sorry?
What happened, we never had one, we've never had one.
Can I correct that? We were, we were an urban district council, this is the urban district council, the Dancie, and we have been wearing it for forty-five years, saying that, I don't see anything, I don't see anything like that.
It's been, it has been repaired a number of times.
Because if you don't see, if you don't know, so, actually, it is inscribed to Alderman Royce on the back, Council Buxton.
Yeah. The two things that are considered over several years, I understand, were, A, that the chain wasn't impressive enough to promote the dignity of the town, the other contentious issue was the cost to change it, so that's why we put some tenders for design. I would agree with Martin, there has been such a backlash against spending that amount of money, since it is an urgent issue, I mean, it's not urgent to have a change in the next few months or whatever, you know, it can wait, I would propose that we drop the thing for now, because independently, Joy and myself have come up with an alternative suggestion, which might cost two fifty, three hundred pounds, which would satisfy both parties if you like, A, it'd look a bit more impressive, and B, it'd certainly be a lot cheaper, so what we thought we might do, if we let this drop, would propose something different in a while, when we've sorted out a design, and bring that back to council.
It's quite simple, the complaints that we have about this one, it's awkward to wear, it's heavy, it comes apart, and the difference, and the only difference really, is the fact this is sitting on a velvet collar, and a local professional seamstress would make us a blue velvet collar, in which it would sit.
To be perfectly honest, I wouldn't possibly wear it for the velvet collar anyway, because they are a pain on your suits, worse than a dress, but that's my question.
Well, we did make a velvet collar, there wouldn't be a pain on the suits, and that would, that would, that would fit the bill, it would cost two hundred pounds, and then the thing would be wearable, it would be, it could be removed, if you wanted to take it off and wear it without, and it could be cleaned.
So, sorry, is your suggestion that you think we could make a velvet collar and carry on using...
Yes, and you, you put the chain on it, so you have the traditional train, which, which we have been using since nineteen eleven, the earlier links, you can see how much we value our early chains, and that they're on the wall, where the bicycle chain, they're never being polished. The chain itself is insured for, what did you tell me, I'm some twenty-two thousand pounds, so what's going to happen to the chain that we already have that's insured for twenty-two thousand pounds, when we spend five thousand pounds on a new one?
There is, we do have, it will have to come back, it's already resolved to purchase it, it was just different quotes, and there is earmark reserves, not general reserves, there's earmark reserves for the gaiter.
I mean, that was one of the reasons that it was brought up, is because there were certainly complaints from councillors over the years, that we've got five thousand pounds in earmark reserves for the gaiter, and we don't have anything with it, so then when you bring it back to do something with it, they still complain that you're spending public money. we're spending public money, but it's already, it's already been earmarked the last five or ten years, hasn't it? So, I, I don't, you know, it, it's one of those things where you, you, you don't if you do, you don't if you don't. People complain if you've got money set to one side to do it and as soon as you do anything about it, they still complain anyway, so councillor Buxton?
Yeah, since we have a new council, I think, plus its new members, I don't see why we can't reverse the decision.
Well, standing on the dental edge to reverse a decision, that's, that's the reason we can't do it. It's do we just not, not make a decision on it and just let it fizzle out by itself?
Councillor Woodley?
Uh, as, as I stated, I am not prepared in any way to endorse spending public money on this. Um, so I don't know what the mechanism is. If you decide as a council to proceed, I'm just staying out of the vote or in fact objecting to spending any money. So I need to understand how I do that, um, and I'd like the clerk to explain how I do that. Um, but I, I, I think it's disgraceful in this day and age personally.
Well, I'll, I'll, well, just, try to contrast.
I'd like to propose actually that we, um, we get a further quotation along the lines that's been proposed by Joyce and then we make a decision based on that.
If it's amended.
If that's what it is, yes, so, sorry, didn't say. Make an amendment, yeah, so I'd like to propose to make an amendment that says. Yeah, with this record, which is going to be organized by councillor Clough.
No, 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 no.
Sorry.